Keith Forbes, I'm a junior at Brandon High School. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love who is with us now in this very room. Thank you for the men and women that lead our town. Thank you for the opportunities the leaders provide to allow our town to be safe and to be one of the best towns which to live. Father, we are so thankful for the many blessings you have given us. We thank you again for our city leaders, city staff, and our first responders. Please be with us all tonight when it is time to go from this place. Keep us safe from harm and remind us throughout this week that everything we do should be to glorify you and your kingdom and your sons. In we pray, amen.
My name is Emery Merritt and I'm a freshman at high school. And I'm at Brandon High School and I'm going to the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge. Our pleasure is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those, we have an outstanding group of young adults that work in the Mayor's Youth Council, perform a lot of functions for us like father-daughter's dance and Christmas parade and Mardi Gras parade and a variety of functions around the city. So they volunteer a lot of time and those are the people that are going to be taking care of us in the years ahead. So if you ever get a chance to pat them on the back and say thank you for what you do and please encourage them. All right, this time we'd like to open this up for a public comment. Mike, you want to go first? Come on.
I'll be brief. Let me introduce myself, my name is Mike Shaw. I have with me my wife Teresa. We live on 23 Pebble Hill Drive in Cross Gates. Let me just give you a little background of our history while we're here tonight. On that afternoon of New Year's Day, January 1, noticed a little leak in the back of our backyard. Looked like it was coming from the neighbor's side. I contacted him, I said, "Man, is your yard wet?" And he said, "No." So we walked the fence line and it was coming up underneath the privacy fence. A nice little stream, like a water hose coming out. So I contacted the on-call person, I guess, called the City of Brandon. And whoever that was said, "We'll have the on-call person come out in 20 minutes." I thought, "That's pretty good, New Year's Day, he'll be out in 20 minutes." It's about 2:30. Well, 20 minutes turned into a couple of hours. I guess the ballgames were good, you know, Alabama and all that stuff was going on. But he finally contacted me and said, "Hey, do you still have water pressure?" And I said, "Yeah." He goes, "Do you mind if I come out in the morning?" I'm not a water expert. Didn't look too bad at the time. I said, "Sure." Well, 2 o'clock that morning, 2:30 a.m., man, it erupted. Some line broke or something, water gushing. I mean, we woke up to the sound of rushing water. When we, feet hit the floor, our feet were wet, cats screaming, houses underwater, houses got water on the floor. We didn't know what was going on. So I called 911, I didn't know who to call. So I called 911, they said, "Contact City of Brandon, somebody be out there." And, you know, it took a while. They said, I kept calling a couple of times, said, "We'll be out, we'll be out, we'll be out." It was a lot of water. I mean, it was a lot of water. The street was impassable, we live on this hill, water rushing down there, flooding our house and a couple of houses below us. Called WLBT, they came out quick, filmed all this stuff and they said, "That's a lot of water, where's that coming from?" I said, "I don't know, some leak or something." But anyway, Carly came out early in the morning, it was cold that morning, between 4:30 and 5:00. Going, "We're doing everything we can to help you out, trying to find the valves to shut off to stop this incredible water flow." Meanwhile, house is still taking on water. Approximately two and a half hours elapsed, water still coming, gushing through everything. And so we, you know, that happened for about three hours. So anyway, around 6 o'clock, they evidently found the valve, they started shutting them off, the water began to subside. Carly, to your credit, she brought, called for some temporary barriers to divert the water from coming into our back of the house to divert it down the driveway. The good mayor came out about, I don't know what time it was, he was out there early, 6 o'clock or so, he stayed the whole day, appreciated. So, you know, and we were getting all this, "Hey, we got this. We're going to take care of this. We're going to make it right." Okay? Adrenaline running high, we've been up since 2:30. I've been in water, two and a half feet deep in my backyard, my house going under. Restoration One knocks on the door. "Hey, man, I can have this water dried up and cleaned up. I'll have crew out here in 20 minutes." Okay, I'm signing a tablet. Okay, I don't know what I'm signing. I understand, at one point Carly and I looked, you did a great job and everything, but I heard you telling, "Hey, send the invoice to us." Well, at this point, I'm feeling pretty good, okay? We've had a catastrophe, city's quick to respond, this is going to be okay. It wasn't okay. So now the nightmare begins. For the next month, I'm in a hotel room. Restoration One's got 26 machines humming, drying out my house for 30 days, which I thought was excessive. My utility bill went up, by the way, $400. So we're staying in there, we got COVID, that's not y'all's fault like that, but. I got COVID twice, I got once in the motel room, there's nowhere to isolate, we're all together. No word from the city. So Restoration comes and, you know, they dried out the house, they ripped up the baseboards, they took up two feet of my walls, saying that the moisture's gone and sheet rock. They recommend the floors be torn out because my, our wonderful ceramic tile that the whole house is in was laid on top of linoleum. They said the linoleum would get wet and they recommended the things. So there's where we're at, everything's ripped up. We can't afford to stay in a motel room, we spent $5,000 in a motel room. The city offered $38,000 settlement, we owe Restoration One almost $32,000. We got that $5,000 hotel bill, I've ate up that settlement of $38,000 and my house is in shambles. Okay? We're eating out most days, we're boarding our cats cheapest way we can and, you know, we're living out of boxes and suitcase. So at the end of 30 days, the settlement being $38,000, I can't afford to stay in this hotel room, we're going to have to move back in our house. We're no spring chickens, we're in our mid-60s. We have to go in the house, clean up the mud and all that that's in the house, Teresa and I, and we get it cleaned up where we can live in it. Okay? So we're living that way, just to make, we're in the house, mud and all the walls are tore up and baseboards ripped out and we don't know if mold or what's going on. So I think we can all agree Restoration One, that price of $100,000 was kind of high. Okay? So we took it upon ourselves to call two people, get two estimates on replacing the floor and two people, two estimates to get the baseboard and all that stuff, and it was quite a bit cheaper. So instead of the $100,000 repair, Restoration One, who just left and left my house messed up, I got about $30,000 to replace the floors. Not replace the ceramic floors, but replace it with vinyl wood, not that wonderful ceramic tile, but anyway. So we took it upon ourselves, "Hey, we got to get this fixed, we can't live like this." We had to move back out while they tore up the ceramic tiles and we stayed another two weeks in a motel at $1,500. So we had to move all our furniture back out into the garage, get everything out of the house. Again, this is just me and Teresa. Finally, we had a son from Minnehaw, he came up, rented a truck, moving supplies, all that stuff, expenses keep piling up. So after another 11-day stay, they got the floor down and we were able to move back our house. Now, we're living, sleeping on an air mattress. I don't know if y'all ever slept on air mattresses, but I'm a pretty big guy and that ain't too, that's not comfortable. And so we're looking at another, you know, no TVs, nothing in the house, we're just existing in the house. We got a toilet put back in, so that was nice. And when I say a hardship, it's been hardship, guys, it hasn't been pleasant at all and through no fault of our own, by the way. But anyway, so the emotional strain's been tough, you know, our stress level's been way out here, frustration level's been really bad. Mayor, I apologize, I unloaded on you one other day on the phone, I didn't mean to, that was totally out of character. But it's been tough. So we're not asking the city to redo our house. And we're not going back to the nice floor we had, it was paid for, we're getting, looking forward to retirement, we had this happen to us and I'm looking at $30,000 out of pocket. Be out, happen, I don't know. But that's where we're at. So our lives have been turned upside down, this has been going on for four months. I don't know. We kind of felt abandoned there for a while. When we called y'all, y'all called back, I appreciate that. We're nice for the, you know, everybody was nice, but we just weren't getting too much satisfaction. So Brent Parker, your city insurance company, came back with the offering and he was going to give us a little bit more. Okay, he went from 38 to 44. Guys, I'm still looking at $70,000 repair on my house. And we're just not getting it. We've just been beaten down so bad and just the heck with it, we kind of said, "We're going to go take the 44 and deal with it." But it's just not right. And I know y'all got things and, but anyway, that's why I'm here tonight to tell our story and there's not only us and there's two other families struggling that don't have the wherewithal that we have that can weather this out or get things done. But that's their concerns and I'm not a ringleader, I've been accused of being a ringleader of these neighborhood advising them what to do. No, that's not the case at all. But I'm asking tonight if there's any way possible, is for a little bit better settlement. May not happen, but I wanted to tell our story to let you know what was going on. Guys, I don't know. But anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming tonight, Mike. Always best to get it straight from first person. All right. Ms. Camille?
Good evening, board. Thank you for letting me speak with you. I have some paperwork, do you want me to hand it out to each member to look at or just wait until I'm done?
Wait till you're done, that's fine. Chief will help you.
This is a, these are copies of the same thing and I only have one copy of this, which is about our organization. But it's, so whoever, so I am a long-term resident of Rankin County. Long-term resident of Rankin County, I reside at 150 Basswood Circle, which is outside the city limits of Brandon. But I am here speaking on behalf of an organization that I represent and that is Mississippi Spay and Neuter. Has anybody heard of Mississippi Spay and Neuter? Yes and no. Well, I didn't know about them until about two years ago and as those of you that do know who they are, they are a, we're a nonprofit. As far as I know, we are the only nonprofit spay and neuter. We do not do rescue, we just do spay and neuter of cats and dogs and are located right here in Rankin County on Highway 49 South. So the reason I'm here to address you this evening is to ask you to, well, let me, let me tell you. Our organization does, last year, we did 3,600 procedures. And for those 3,600 procedures of spaying and neutering cats and dogs, we actually put $70,000 into those, to pay for those procedures. So, and as of those, we do statistics on where our customers come from, our clients. And last year, of those 3,297 procedures, 420 were done for people that came from the 39042 ZIP code. That is 12.7% of our total number of clients. So including the Jackson area, including Madison, by far collectively, Brandon and Rankin County as a whole is the biggest percentage of the number of clients that we have. So there are, you have a lot of citizens that are coming to us for spay and neuter procedures. I don't know what the level of a problem that unwanted cats and dogs are because I don't live in Brandon. But I can tell you just from my dealings with Mississippi Spay and Neuter, it is a problem everywhere you look. You know, cats and dogs don't know where the county line and the city limits are, they just go where they go. So even though it might not be a problem here, if it's a problem in Pilahatchee, it's a problem here. So actually, you know, Mississippi, it's a problem statewide. So I'm proud to represent this organization because we look at spaying and neutering as the ultimate solution of unwanted cats and dogs, not rescue. A lot of the organizations in the Jackson metro area are rescue organizations, including Mississippi Animal Rescue League. However, they do spay and neuter a certain percentage of their animals. I will tell you that since we came to Jackson in 2008, which is when we started a brick and mortar nonprofit, we have decreased the number of, this is per Deborah Boswell, who is the long-term director of Mississippi Animal Rescue League. She tells us that we have reduced their animal intake by 5,000 animals per year. They still take in 8,900 animals a year and they euthanize 80% of those. Think about that. That's truly tragic. So she, we work very closely with Mississippi Animal Rescue League and so the reason I'm here to address you, board, is to ask, there is a, have you heard of the, you've probably seen the I Care tag, it has the cat and the dog on it. Well, that is a, that was set up by the state of Mississippi and the funds from those tags is collected by the state and put on, the state offers grants to nonprofits, municipalities, and counties. Currently, there are a lot of nonprofits that apply for it every year. The grant is currently $2,500 for the first year and every year thereafter, it's $4,500. So right now, Natchez, the city of Natchez and Adams County are currently the two counties and, I mean, the county and the municipality that I know utilize this grant. So, so we've already approached Rankin County and they are currently working on applying for this grant. And so the reason I'm here is to ask that the city of Brandon apply for this grant. And the way that this works is that you would apply for the grant, receive the $2,500, it's pretty, it's very straightforward application. And keep those, those funds, you know, wherever you would keep them. And then as we do $2,500 worth of procedures for people that live in the 39042 ZIP code, then we would send you that data and you would reimburse our organization for those procedures. So it goes to your citizens and nobody else. So that's, in a nutshell, that's what that's all about. I do want to say that we currently have a grant because we are a nonprofit, so we already get the grant. But as I said, $4,500 doesn't go a long way when you're putting $70,000 into the procedures every year. We, every dime we get, we have a budget of about $700,000 every year and it comes in and it goes right back out the door. Because we stay booked up two months in advance, so the demand is clearly there. We never, we never get caught up. We keep two vets on, rotating and it's, it's a very well-oiled organization, I'm very proud of us. You know, we have our own thrift store and it's helped sustain us. It's one, you know, we do have rents and we do have, we do have a wellness clinic and we do make income from the wellness clinic and the procedures. Because not everybody needs to be subsidized. The people that we subsidize typically are low-income elderly, disabled, and veterans. And so everybody else pays the standard fee. So we are, you know, we're trying to get more sustainable, self-sustaining. And one of the ways that we can do that is for Rankin County and Brandon and some other municipalities to apply for that. So that's it in a nutshell, do you have any questions? I have, what I gave to the gentleman here is the application for everybody to look at and a packet of information that tells you about our organization, which includes the IRS 501(c)(3) designation.
Thank you, Ms. Camille.
All right, thank you so much.
Appreciate you coming. Does anyone else here this evening would like to make a public comment before the board? All right, seeing none, we will work on through the agenda. Old Business approved the work session and regular board meeting minutes of April 1st and April 3rd, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sharon Womack, second, Mr. Jerry Crane. Any questions on those? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Under the mayor. Audience and board, we have a major street resurfacing plan going on this year. One of the components of that is a final wear surface at Quarry Park and then another addition out there on Marquette Road. It's my opinion, we've talked about this for several months, that I think now that asphalt would be better served at Shallow Park. And I'd rather take that tonnage that we were putting on Marquette Road and take it out to Shallow Park. So I see Mr. Miller is not in here, but Matthew Miller and I went back and forth on this. It is a calculatable number and I'd rather take that tonnage out there to that large parking lot we have across the ditch from the baseball fields, between the baseball fields and the soccer fields and just begin to improve that parking lot. It's got to do nothing but help get cars off the side of the road at Shallow Park. Chief and I have talked about that so we can more strongly enforce people not parking on the road. And I think that's the best use of those few dollars. Audience, that's not borrowed money, that comes out of our 2% fund, so that's not borrowed money. And I don't feel, I feel like the board needs to have some input on that decision before I ask the contractor to do that. It's no change mark in tonnage or anything else, just to change the location, what you're frowning up for, that's all it is. So board, your thoughts on that, that's what number one is. Yeah, yeah, well, that was a free parking lot, that was ground concrete that came off the interstate bridge that Joe McGee hauled and put there for us for free and we spread it and it makes a good base, so. Okay, so just if you would, I'd like to make it part of the minutes, your agreeable with modifying that overlay project to, all right. Mr. Baker, you need anything else? Well, it's really a, there's no information to have on it, it's just changing the tonnage from what was going to go down on Marquette Road and putting it on Shallow, not Road, Marquette Road, the base, the future baseball field at Marquette Road. Taking that tonnage and taking it to Shallow Park and putting it on a parking lot out there, an unimproved parking lot, that's all it is. Just wanted the board to be involved in that decision. All right. All right, motion by Mr. Lou Coker, second, third second. Second, Mr. Chris Benson, any comment or question on that? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right, Ms. Angela.
May I take all of my items together?
Yes, ma'am, slowly, please.
Sure. The first item is consideration to appoint Benchmark Engineering to provide services for the 2024 Diamond Emerald Street Sewer Line Rehabilitation CDBG Project and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents. Second item is set a public hearing to be held on May 3 at 9:00 a.m. for the purpose of obtaining citizen input regarding the 2024 Diamond Emerald Street Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Number three, consideration to approve purchase of Microsoft licenses from SHI, which is a state contract vendor, in the amount of $49,012.86 and authorize payment of the same. Number four, consideration to approve the renewal of professional services agreement with Civic Plus in the amount of $9,688.98 and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Number five, accept the fiscal year 2023 continuing disclosure statement as prepared by Butler Snow. Number six, consideration to approve the docket of claims for April 15, Fox Everett Claims released on April 4. Last item, number seven, spread on to the minutes approval letters from Attorney General Lynn Fitch and certifications from Secretary of State Michael Watson. It's the approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Rankin County and the cities of Pearl and Brandon regarding construction of the I-20 connector loop, KCS grade separation. Approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Rankin County and the city of Brandon regarding construction of the I-20 connector loop, East Loop. And the last one is approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Brandon and Rankin County regarding the Cross Gates Crossing Tiff Project.
All right, thank you, Ms. Angela. Go ahead, Mr. Baker, what's you?
Okay, first, all of those interlocal agreements have been approved. So all we're doing is spreading them on the minutes with the approvals from the Attorney General and the Secretary of State, and these are actually filed docs. So we're filing, we're spreading on the minutes, the Chancery Clerk filed docs and the approval letters from the Attorney General and the Secretary of State. That's what number seven is. Okay, I just want to make sure and I'm going to clean those minutes up to reflect that. But you, all of these have been previously approved by the board.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Is, is that correct time, number 9:00 a.m.?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. It doesn't have to be held in conjunction with a board meeting.
What else you got, Mr. Baker?
That's the only thing I have on that one.
All right. Seven items. Is there a motion to approve those seven items from the clerk?
Some move.
Mr. Jerry Crane?
Second.
Second, Mr. Chris Vinson. Any comment or question? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Angela. All right, board, we have a couple of illnesses. Had some good weekend things going on, but Brian is out sick today, and Heather has had to go get a sick grandchild. So, I'm going to navigate through event services. If there's a question, Angela and I will work through it and get you an answer. Number one, request permission to enter into a professional services agreement with Mississippi Race Timing and Management LLC for the Brandon Jubilee 5K run on Saturday, April 27th, 2024, as defined in the service contract, authorize the mayor to execute same. Number two, request permission to enter into a professional services agreement with Rods Racers LLC to promote the Brandon Jubilee 2024 5K on Rods Racers area-wide social media outlets, as terms defined in the attachment, same group that was used for the 5K run downtown this past weekend. Number three, consideration to approve the professional services agreement with Ambiance Landscape LLC for landscaping services at the Brandon Amphitheater, as terms listed in the professional services agreement, and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Number four, authorize the purchase of state contract item Kubota Cargo RTV from state contract provider Easy Wheels Incorporated, as terms listed in the attached, authorize the mayor to execute same, and amend the Brandon Amphitheater operations budget to reflect the same. So, it doesn't come out of the 2% fund, board, that comes out of the operational fund. Since we had a good year last year, a couple of items there. Number five, request permission to accept the professional services agreement from Pelehachi, Pelehachi Pyro Fireworks LLC for a fireworks show with the Brandon Jubilee 2024, as listed in the attached professional services agreement, and authorize the mayor to execute same, Brandon Jubilee Days. Number six, request permission to approve Brandon Jubilee 2024 advertisement campaign for the purpose of promoting the opportunities and possibilities of the city of Brandon, and authorize the mayor to execute same, and Rankin County News, and Your Country U.S. 96. Number seven, consideration to approve professional services agreements in the purposes of promoting tourism in accordance with House Bill 1521, 2023 Mississippi Legislature Session, with Live Nation Worldwide Incorporated for a performance of Need to Breathe at the Brandon Amphitheater on Tuesday, April 30th, 2024, and authorize the mayor to execute same, and approve payment of all show-related expenses. All right, Mr. Baker's got a question there. Go ahead, sir.
A lot of the agreements that are, or some of the agreements that are referenced are not in the minutes, in the packets that I included, or is that because these are the same agreements from last year, just updated for current terms? Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's the same fireworks agreement, the same everything?
Yes.
Okay. And the Midway agreement, we previously approved several months back, is that right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And, board and audience, the reason why, you know, we've got two new folks on with event services, and they're getting their feet under them, and these things will be coming to you earlier in the year. It's just a little bit pressed for time, getting people trained, and learning what to do and when to do it. So, that's why some of this is all jammed together. All right. So, we've got seven items.
I got one question.
Sure.
And it was just a concern from attending the event last year. Will we have more food vendors this year?
Will we have more food vendors? Well, the Midway brings their own food vendors, and then if there are food vendors that want to be there across the road, they can be there across the road, if they choose to be there, to locate, locate there.
I got you.
So, that's by, by choice.
Okay.
Anybody else that's got a question for us? That's a good question. All right. Is there a motion to approve those seven items for event services?
Seven.
Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. David Ferris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Hello, Ms. Carley.
Good evening.
So, board, I'm, I'm going to preempt, Ms. Carley, before she gets started on her dissertation here of 10 items. Mr. Baker, how about we cut those in half at five before she gets started? But on the cart you see here on the floor in front of you, I've had conversations over the years with you concerning what grinder pumps are and what they aren't. That is missing one big component, and that is the tank that goes with it. Those tanks are very similar to the size of those podiums you see. So, when you install a tank, those gizmos go inside the tank and run, and they are the property of the city of Brandon. Now, we're coming into several, as it would be, or manifesting itself. These guys, probably, I'd say, ooh, 10, 12, 15 grinder pump issues in various locations around the city every week. There are approximately 550 of these scattered around the city, and this is more evidence that we need to move forward with a fog ordinance, because the most recent example of, this, this is city property that exists in someone's yard. Sometimes it's right upside the house, sometimes it's some distance from the house. But that is city property. And when somebody pours paint down the drain, or pours oil or grease down the drain, it's affecting city property. And therefore, everybody else in the city, we all, through our enterprise fund, pay to repair and maintain these things. So, we need to get to work, and we are, on a fog ordinance that will be coming before you, but through that fog ordinance would be more fines of taking care of the damage that's done to these things. So, Carley, if you would, kind of just describe a couple of things there. And more importantly for me and the board is the cost of a grinder pump.
The bigger pump that's sitting here is an E1 pump. That runs right at $2,000 just for that pump. So, anything that's put in the system that damages it, we have to replace that entire pump, and those are about $2,000 right at it. There's also, I don't know if y'all can see it, but on the backside here, we have floats. Those get damaged when various items are put in the system. They get hung up. When we have to replace floats, they are around $130 each time. And then, we have control panel, which is the one with the red alarm-looking box over there. That costs us about $425. Just a whole system, if you have to install every bit of this, runs about $5,000 for us. But we mostly replace the pumps, so every time we're doing that, it's around $2,000, not including labor.
All right. So, I hope if you'll take your trusty calculator out and multiply that times 550, you'll get some idea of the scope of the investment that we have in that city property that we need to better maintain and look out for.
We, we repaired four of them today, not necessarily replacing pumps, but just to give y'all an idea, just today, we had four repairs on grinders.
Thank you, Ms. Carley.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you getting all that in here. And, board, you got any questions about grinder pumps? Okay. All right.
Would it be worth, you looking at it long-term, getting it off, off the grinder pump?
I would highly recommend it.
Absolutely. It's called sanitary sewer. So, anybody that comes in now, we're working toward that. These were put in over years past. You're talking many, many millions of dollars to go back to create a system of sanitary sewer to begin to weed these off. Every time we have an opportunity to eliminate one, we will. If we can tie somebody into sanitary sewer to eliminate a couple of grinder pumps, we're all in. So, it needs to be a little bit more aggressive, and our planning needs to be more aggressive as we look at subdivisions, the properties that are beside those, those. Give you a good example is the end of Busick Well Road. What should have been done when all this came up was Rosemont and Pro Lots. It would have been fairly easily to tie in sanitary sewer into those systems at that time. Just wasn't thought of as being something that was needed. All right, great question. All right. Here we go, Ms. Carley. You can go ahead and start on number one. We'll do one through five.
One through five, okay. Item number one, asking for your consideration to approve the quote from Southern Electric Corporation in the amount of $13,857 for the installation of two streetlight poles with new LED fixtures along Municipal Drive. Number two, consideration to rescind the board action of April 1st, approving the hire of Greg Cole as a laborer for in the Public Works Department. Number three, consideration to approve invoice number H23113-02 final, in the amount of $7,097.55 from Hemp Hill Construction Company for the emergency water leak repairs at 25 Pebble Hill Drive, and authorize payment of the same. Number four, consideration to accept the permanent utility easement, excuse me, permanent electrical utility easement for the quarry maintenance building located at 200 Boinks Thompson Drive, and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Number five, consideration to approve invoice H23113-02 final, in the amount of $48,216.27 from Hemp Hill Construction Company for emergency repairs made in November 2023, December 2023, and January 2024, authorize payment of the same, and amend the budget accordingly.
Thank you, Carley. Now, board, Mr. Baker, I got to tell you on number five, this was in a transition time between our last public works director when he left, and invoices weren't submitted in a timely way or reached for. So, that's where those interhares come from, but we're making up time quickly. All right? You got any questions on one through five, Mark? Things pretty straightforward. Good?
You're welcome.
All right. So, board, we're voting on one through five. Is there a motion, any questions on any of those? Is there a motion to approve those five items?
Some moved.
Motion by Mr. Jerry Crane, second by Ms. Sharon Womack. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Ms. Carley?
Item number six, consideration to approve pay request three, in the amount of $91,531.17 from Hemp Hill Construction Company for the Highway 80 Signal Improvements Project, Stone Gate and Woodgate Drive, and authorize payment of the same. Number seven, consideration to approve change order one, in the amount of $14,275 for the Highway 471 Sewer Line Extension Project. Number eight, consideration to proceed with the sewer point repairs as listed for the Hunterswood Sewer Repair Project Group One at the FY24 commodity bid pricing. Number nine, consideration to award the quote in the amount of $23,250 from Sullivan Construction Services for the Afton Drive Drainage Improvements Project. And number 10, consideration to approve Harvey Services invoice number 6751, in the amount of $6,908.75 for the remaining emergency repairs to the Shelby Circle Lift Station, and authorize payment of the same.
Thank you, Ms. Carley.
You're welcome.
Board, is there a motion to approve six, seven, eight, nine, and 10?
Some moved.
Motion by Mr. Jerry Crane. You said that. Second by Mr. Lou Coker. Any question on those, board? All right, go ahead. Mr. Baker?
The comment here, Carley, we've got the memo with regard to the change order, and that's the, that's to the original contract, realize that you needed a steel casing over that because of some traffic issues or some...
Yes, that's correct.
And I know we've got a memo from Benchmark on that. Could you supplement that to show why? Because it doesn't really say why we need it. It just says future protection.
Yes, yes, we do have a, something to go with it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Baker, that's a steel casing in the ditch to protect that pipe from stormwater, to be exact. Yeah, sure, I understand. Want you to know where it's at, though. Between Spears Cross and 471. Lou Coker, the second. All right, we got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carley.
Thank you.
All right, Sam, you're up. Good evening.
I'd like to take one and four individually and two and three together, if possible.
All right. Well, why don't we go ahead and just take two and three, and get them out of the way?
All right. Number two, set public hearing from May 6, 2024, regarding a zoning reversal from PUD to R12 for parcel number I8L-27. Number three, set public hearing from May 6, 2024, regarding a rezone request for Mirror Lake Land Company, Ergon, to rezone parcel number G8L-1-20 from CC to RH.
All right, thank you. So, item two and three are setting public hearings. Is there a motion to approve that request? Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. Jerry Crane. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right, now we're going to take number one.
Yes, sir. Public hearing and board action regarding a planned unit development overlay request for Dale Partners Architects and the Thrash Group, parcel number H8Q-7-20.
Mr. Baker?
Sam, can you advise the board as to whether all the prerequisites to the public hearing have been met?
They have.
And was the matter submitted to the planning commission?
It was.
And did you receive a recommendation from the planning commission?
We did.
What was the recommendation?
To approve it.
Okay. And did you prepare a staff report? Did your office prepare a staff report in this case?
We did, sir. It's 23-027.
Okay. Are you asking that the staff report, together with all the documents, things appended there too, and incorporated into the file in this matter, be appended to the minutes of this public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And effectively, can you explain to the board what, what the subject of the application is?
This would class, be classified as a planned unit development, and it meets, even in building heights, really, which was the major constraint with the current zoning. The deviation in building heights was too great for us to provide a variance. But it met all the prerequisites, and to be a PUD, a planned unit development overlay on the commercial zoning that it's currently zoned.
Okay. And in conjunction with the, the application, the applicant is required to submit to the city the elements that are, that are designated within the minimum planned unit development standards as set forth in section 3.8.3.2a through F. Is that correct?
That's right.
Can you advise the board and the audience as to whether or not those submissions have been made?
They have.
And in fact, have you received a master plan with regard to the development?
I have, and that, it won't change, but prior to a final submittal of that, we are working through the, the regional detention, which will also be using the adjacent property to the west.
For those that may have public comment, can you describe for the board the nature of the application, just generally speaking? What's going to happen? What are they seeking to do?
They're going to build a mixed, a mixed-use development, which will have residential lofts, a, a hotel, office, and retail space, potentially a restaurant. That's generally the project description.
The space, the property that's located adjacent to City Hall?
That's right.
Okay. And, and the recommendation of your department is to approve the application?
That's right.
Having generally heard the nature of the application as explained by the Director of Community Development, is there anyone here who desires to make any public comment with regard to the same? Okay. And Sam, your, 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 your staff report and your recommendation is based on the fact that you believe that the applicant has in fact met all of its required burdens of proof with regard to the application and the, and the submittals? And in effect, upon the closing of the public hearing, you're asking that the board adopt an ordinance rezoning the parcel HO8Q-7-20 from CC, Community Commercial, to the Heights at Brandon Planned Unit Development District. Is that correct?
That's right.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, does the public hearing close?
All right, public hearing is closed. Board, what's the will of moving forward with that?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Chris Vinson to approve, second by Ms. Sharon Womack. Any questions, comments? I'll make one comment, board. The last thing is the property from Energy, and now I'll be on the phone with them in the morning to get, to tell them you're holding up a project. So... the morning to get, to tell them you're holding up a project, so. So, we got to get that stormwater stuff straightened out. Yes, sir.
Any update on the lights? The streetlights from Energy?
Not from Energy. I haven't gotten an update, no. Other than, I guess they move the fuel a lot. You got any update recently?
As far as account on what's...
Yes.
I do not. I can find something out and get it to y'all tomorrow, probably. I mean, as soon as I can get it from Energy in Southern Pine, I could, or we can do another inventory. We don't mind doing that.
No, not, we don't need to do another inventory yet.
You know, within the first week after that, I think they had fixed 14 out of the, I can't even remember how many it was, 105 or however many it was.
Okay.
But I, as far as a definitive answer on how many are working, I don't have that.
Okay.
All right. We'll get that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I've got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Thanks, Sam. Number four.
All right. Number four, consideration of site plan and development review approval for consolidated pipe, parcel number H-8-1-4-0. And I'm sure y'all remember, I guess it would have been in August or September of last year, we approved a rezone for consolidated pipe to come, and we've had quite a few due diligence issues with that, but I think we're about ready, ready to go on it. And I've been working with their civil engineer on a few things. I know that we've gone back and forth with a few comments. They've agreed to address them, and it's minor stuff. One thing that I know aesthetically might come as a concern, or would be a concern for y'all, is the general building materials on the exterior. In the elevation that you have in your package, it shows that it's a metal building with a basically a short, like brick ledge, masonry detail on the front. We've requested that there be increase in the, basically the veneer not be totally metal, that sort of thing. There were some stormwater concerns, just wanting to see the numbers on their hydraulics, but other than that, everything looked good. That, and we wanted to see fire suppression system in the building. Other than that, everything was good, so our recommendation is to approve it.
One comment. I've got a late email. Seemed to be some conversation about getting to a lift station, that they would be, it would be gravity to the lift station. I don't know that. Was that issue ever resolved?
This, I believe, is ongoing. I received a call today from the developer, which is, it's a little, that's a sort of separate from, it is relevant to this project, but it's not consolidated pipe who's performing that work. That would be the developer, so that's going to, and I don't know who the developer is. I think it's, it might be Jett. It might be, I don't know who it is, but...
I'm just trying to get to, do they need a grinder pump, or is this going to be sanitary sewer to the lift station?
Okay. And I know that he...
The question of the day is yes or no on a grinder pump, or will it be sanitary sewer to the lift station?
I would say we don't want to see a grinder pump.
Oh, absolutely. No, that's why I'm trying to get, I want to make sure there's not a grinder pump pumping to the lift station.
Well, that's something that we need to clear up. I mean, I can help with that, no doubt. Carley and I, I know that Carley was speaking with Josh Thrash about that a pretty good bit. I don't know if there's any resolution on it, but I can, you know, pitch in on that and help us get...
Okay. It's to you, Carley, if we can make a note to follow up and make sure we're all, well, there was a late email today, so, asking that question, so we just need to make sure we're...
I got a call about that email. I told him I would look into it, so it's something her and I need to put our heads together on, us and Matthew.
All right. So, consolidated pipes, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Sharon, is everybody familiar with where this is located?
We make that motion contingent on approval for immediate development.
Well, that's, that's in the, basically, if you look at the staff reports, the staff recommendation, that's, that's what it is. It's contingent upon some things that they're aware of, that they are aware of.
And that being one of them?
Yes, sir. There's three things. I believe it was the stormwater, hydraulics, veneer on the building, and then fire suppression. That was it.
Well, then, there's four things, and that would be...
You're talking about the additional thing being on the developer?
And sanitary sewer.
Right. But that's, that's going to fall on the developer, not consolidated.
Oh, I understand that. I got that. I just want to make sure there's not a snafu or a misunderstanding.
I understand.
You need nothing to say right now. The site plan is my food, and the rest, these things are done. So, if it falls through the cracks, it has not fallen through the cracks. But what they're saying is, this is important, that you have another question to deal with.
Okay. Right. So, four, four items. Okay.
I know what the four you said, and that, that would be it.
He said three.
I said three.
And I said four.
We're adding this, so now it's four.
All right. You're going to revise it?
Yeah, someone's bothering you.
I'll, yeah, I'll revise the staff report.
All right. It is across from Brown Bottling. It will be the second lot on the north side of Morris Gray Drive. So, it will be, it will butt up to the city limits on the back side, back there, the back corner.
On the west, on the west side of the property, that's the, that's the city limit line.
Okay. Of this lot. All right, so was that a second? Dwight? Okay. Second by Mr. Dwight Middleton. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have two items. Can I take them together?
Yes, sir.
All right, the first one is to request permission to hire and set rate of pay in accordance with the memo on, one, Joseph Branch is a patrolman effective April 15, 2024. If you would, Mr. Branch, step up, wave. Number two, Lawanda Lucine as a communications officer effective April 29, 2024. If you would, go ahead and stand up and wave, please. And number three, William Saul is a sergeant effective April 15, 2024. Go and have a seat. I request permission for Sergeant Connor Smith to travel to Biloxi to participate in the MLEOA 2024 Summer Conference K-9 Training and Certification Course from June 2 to June 7, 2024.
All right. Thank you, chief. Is there a motion to approve those two items, please? Who said that? Motion by David Ferris. Second by Mr. Jared Crane. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Thanks, chief.
Thank you, sir.
We will swear those officers in before we go into executive session. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'll take all three together.
Yes, sir.
Sorry for you guys. Request permission to change the employment status of Lieutenant Dan Vance to full-time to part-time. Firefighter, paramedic, and set the rate of pay pursuant to the memo. Item number two is request permission to purchase lights and sirens from Moore Installation for the lowest and best quote. Item number three is consideration to approve salary increases for three probationary firefighters effective April 15, 2024, upon completion of the state fire academy's receiving certification pursuant to the memo. And they all three did get their certification and graduated.
Thank you, chief. Is there a motion to approve those three items? Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack. Second, Mr. Harry Williams. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Board would like to retire to determine the necessity of being in executive session. Motion by Mr. Luke Coker. Second by Mr. Dwight Middleton. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. All right, we'd like to swear those two officers in and welcome aboard before we leave the room.
Hello.
Are you a columnist? That guy claiming he's a columnist.
The lady? Yes.
Sounds like the gentleman. I guess so.
Session, one was related to personnel matters and one was related to pending litigation.
All right. Board, we need a motion to adjourn until our next meeting which is May the what Angela? Unless we have a special call.
Motion.
Yeah, regular board meeting is May the... Got a motion by Lou Coker, second by...
Second.
Mike Seig.
Second by Sharon Womack, on the paper say aye. Thank you board.